That's okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to call for the House of Representatives meeting. We're ready to begin. As of this evening, Monday, August fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P. M. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you be kind enough to call the roll for us tonight?
Councilwoman Shafi.
Present.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Council Proton Robinson.
Present.
Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, City Council, take your time. And the Chair will entertain a motion as it relates to today's agenda. Thank you, ma'am.
I move to approve the agenda for City Council meeting today dated Monday, August fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Chair Office, second. Questions, concerns, dissent? Yes. So would you, would you mind addressing the whole Council, sir?
Good, good evening. My understanding is that the administration is requesting that one item be removed from the agenda. That would be item six under Community Development Resolution approved special land use for one four zero zero one Woodward Avenue. My understanding is that there needs to be some further Council discussion and review. Part of the item being on the agenda.
Is it, is it Council's discussion or just somebody else's discussion?
Right.
Because I don't see how it's Council's discussion, it's first time they brought to us. Okay, so I'm curious about that. So isn't the, isn't the policy to, to look at the application? See it's, see that it meets the requirements from the planning commission? And then send a public here because the public is dying to hear about this one here.
Yeah, Councilman, my understanding is that the request is that the item be taken out of the agenda so it could have that review that you're discussing right now.
Who, who requested?
I was asked to get it pulled off the agenda by the administration.
So which administration member asked you to pull it off, did you?
I believe it's, it's listed under Community Development.
He asked you, he asked you to remove.
Yeah, the mayor reminded me just now.
Okay. Okay, so.
And I believe it'd be under Director Clyburn's department.
Okay, is a.
Point of reference, this is something that we could, a motion to deny or motion to approve. Right now, we have the agenda as it stands. Well, and I want some deliberation, Mr. Shafi, don't think I, this is one of the, this is where I'm counting on. We have a motion on the floor for the approval of the agenda. We have a recommendation from Council to, from our legal council here to remove it. Is there any more discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yeah.
Five points after he said it needs to be removed and put on a workshop. So that there should be a presentation, a, be presented, that has been presented. So it has to be presented, all of that, then county decide what kind to go to the future agenda. It hasn't even come for the council at all.
Right, Mr., to Mr. Shafi's point, with all due respect, Miss Square, so, um, oftentimes we get things here that we're asked to vote on with, without a workshop, and I don't know the consensus feeling for other members as to how they want to address this. I don't know if a workshop would even be necessary. Having received this packet, having looked at it, I think that, I feel very confident that the members in front of me have, have looked at it and, um, yeah, so I don't, again, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. We have a recommendation made by our legal department to remove it. Madam, Ms. Manica, would you, you could, you still want to move forward with your motion? I will retain my support if you want to move.
Maybe I didn't clearly understand. You want to remove it so that they can go to a workshop?
I don't see the, I don't see the reason why this would have to go to a workshop. We voted on so many important things before without a workshop. I don't see any good reason why this would need to go to a workshop. That's just my personal opinion. I think, um, the application is, uh, in front of us provides us with a substantial amount of information that we would have to belabor what we see in front of us for an hour or so. I don't even know if it would merit that. I beg your pardon, ma'am?
Yeah, there's an incorrect language.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We saw, we saw, we saw, we saw. Errors withstanding, if, if, you know, errors withstanding, um, I feel fairly confident that having had the packet since Thursday that everybody's had a chance to look at it. I don't, um, to, to the mayor's point, there are errors. There are some significant errors in this document. That is not for us, counsel, to point out. That is not for us, that is not for the council to fix. But there are errors, gross errors in the document as it's prepared. So I don't necessarily want to even vote this through as it is because there are too many errors for us to even touch it. I would be, um, send this back. Send this back. It's not correct. For one, a clean vote would have to have a correct document. So check your emails.
So, Council President?
Yes, sir.
So I received an email, I'm sure that everybody else received the same email.
I did. I kind of want to keep my.
Okay, and, and, and the reason I'm concerned about these.
And I am as well.
As I said, I'll tell you, my constituents are dying to see their teeth to this, okay? I tell you, they got a lot to say, okay, about this particular, uh, type of, of business.
Sure.
Okay, so, so having, 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 having said that, the email said that, uh, that the planning commission.
We cannot, we can't disclose that.
I'm not disclosing.
We can't disclose it.
Saying is, everything was in order up until this point. I've done my research, I've done my homework, the residents are ready.
Yeah.
To respond. I do not feel the need to table this or move it to a workshop. We've never had any workshop before.
Yeah, I agree. You're absolutely right. But to, to our, to our, to our point, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, hold on, hold on, ma'am, ma'am. To, to the, to the, to your, and I support your position on this. I don't even think it's worth going and having the pitchforks and torches. I think the document as it is, is erroneous, there's enough errors in it that legally we shouldn't even vote on this thing because there's too many errors in it. The package is not put together properly. There, there are so, there are blatant errors in it that would not allow us to vote and provide any fidelity to the vote because we're voting on something that's wrong. They can.
Would have been helpful, Council President, is if legal would have pointed out them errors.
I agree.
In a confidential email to us before we did our homework.
I agree. I agree. What I, to, to your, to your point, and I've had, very rarely do I take phone calls from people to complain, but I've had enough conversations where I think all of us have heard from our constituents. I think everybody has heard from their constituents. And what I'm saying is, this is not worth voting on today, and I don't know if a workshop will change anybody's mind, and I don't necessarily want to have a, a, a meeting where people come and scream their concerns publicly when we can just vote based on what our constituents want. We are the representative voters for the constituents. So let's get back to the, the order at hand, which is the approval of the agenda.
Can counsel later on down the line send us a, a pinpoint, a, a confidential presentation in an email to point out to us exactly what is wrong with this application because I'm just not seeing it.
So just, just as we're on the agenda, remember, we're approving the agenda. The packet that we received. And we're not supposed to really get too far in the weeds on it. The packet that we received, I'm going to refer. Again, remember that we want to vote on the agenda. Okay, in this document, we have a recommendation from.
And it was second.
Huh?
Just making sure.
Yeah, we have a recommendation from Planning Commission.
How does the paperwork go from the planning commission? Get messed up and then come to the first.
We can't assume it's messed up. So let's do this.
Yeah.
So, so, so let's, let's do this. I don't, based on what I have in front of me. I think everybody has enough information that we don't need a workshop for this. However, this document as it is, we can't, in my opinion, vote on it because there are errors in it. If we vote on this with these errors in it, that doesn't give the applicant a clean vote. You understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying.
Yep, so I don't, I think they should fix it. It's not our job to tell them what's wrong. If it comes back again wrong, it goes back. If it ever comes up for vote, open up the water hose, do what you got to do.
Well, my next question is to you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Are you going to have more workshops in the future?
So the workshops that we, so we're off, we're off the agenda, but I'll go there for you. The workshops that we had lined up for the next several months were to work on ordinances. In order to work on those ordinances, we needed support in the partnership of the McKenna Group. You guys fired them last week.
They still here.
Uh, listen, mind you.
We're not talking about the McKenna Group.
They still here.
I'm talking about workshops.
So, so the, the help that we were going to get, help that we were going to get, that's still up in the air right now until we sort this thing out. We need them to work on the ordinances, which is our highest priority.
I thought it was our job and not the McKenna Group's job.
Point of information.
We need, we need resources, we need help. Go ahead. And we're going to get back to the vote.
I'd like to know if we're going to, uh, for this, because you're saying that we should not vote on it.
I agree.
Due to the errors.
Yep, so.
So are, are we going to remove it, but remove it not for a workshop, just to be brought back to us?
Be brought back.
On the agenda, or are we going to table it?
So what I, if, so what I would like to see is this item come off today's agenda and go back to CED, be corrected, and then come to us for a vote so that we can vote and deliberate at such time. Any citizens that want to be heard on this?
My, my emotion.
I will resent my support. So I'm here to entertain a motion on tonight's agenda. Do we have one?
The motion is, I approve, I'm sorry, I move to approve the agenda with the removal of item six.
That's the same motion you just made, Ms. Manica.
No, ma'am.
No.
No, sir.
I'm removing it.
She didn't ask to, that was the recommendation. Now we have a motion and Chair will offer support. The motion is on the floor is to approve tonight's agenda with one modification, that would be the removal of item six under Community Development Resolution to approve the special land use for one four zero zero one Woodward Avenue, Tequila Downs. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call the roll for the approval of today's agenda, removing that item?
You support it?
Yes, I have a support, correct. I have support, Chair for support.
Councilwoman Shafi.
I'll vote no for the removal. Got to tell me what's wrong with it, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion here. To the people who voted, no, listen, I want us to have a clean vote.
Somebody needs to tell us what's wrong with it.
I, I think, I think you're absolutely right.
Full message, Council President.
You're actually, you're actually right, but considering what it is, you are ready. When it comes back, if it comes back with errors, then it's got to go in the ring.
Right, right, yeah. But if they want us to vote, then they need to give us the proper information so we know exactly what the errors are from this time to the next time. Okay, I'm glad to be left in the dark here.
I can't, I would actually, I would actually be happy to share that. In fact, I'm going to give my highlighter out. I'm going to give my, so the motion is, so it's all.
Always in the dark.
Agenda has been approved. Let's move on to item four. That's the approval of the proposed mini in-person virtual workshop meeting for July twenty-first. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the in-person and virtual workshop meeting held July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Chair Office, support. Questions, concerns, consent, dissent? Roll call vote, would you please take your roll now?
Councilwoman Shafi.
What meeting was this?
This was the, uh, virtual, uh, workshop for the twenty-first.
For the Spark Grant, yeah, okay, yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, moving on to the in-person and virtual regular meeting for July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the in-person and regular meeting July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Chair Office, support. Questions, concerns, dissent? Please call a roll now.
Councilwoman Shafi.
I got, I got a question here, Council President.
Go ahead.
Um, is this, isn't this the one? Okay, hold on a second, I see it. Never mind. Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Last, and the approval minutes, in-person and virtual special meeting for July forty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. City Council, what's your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion from Proton Robinson, seconded by?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shafi, questions, concerns, dissent for in-person virtual special meeting July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five, please call a roll on that.
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
No, I was not in attendance.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
No, I didn't attend, thank you. Okay, this is the section of meeting that we turn over to Mayor McDonald.
Good evening, everyone, the city citizens. Good evening, honorably body. Um, I may have one thing, two things I want to talk about. One is tomorrow, out here at the, uh, One is tomorrow, out here at the uh Massachusetts, California area, the Police Department will be hosting this annual National Night Out. Please come out and support your Police Department, it's free, they will have food, entertainment, our own cocoa will be here. Uh, also, we have live bands, and food. Uh, and other things going on, prizes, whatever they have out there, please come out and support. It is free, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, come out. National Night Out is uh celebrated all across the country by Police Departments, and so, we want to support our police officers and make sure that they know that they are supported by the citizens as well as the staff. Uh, the other thing I have right now is the list that you have, that's just one list. I want you to know that the county has torn down, is starting to tear down seventy of their properties. So they have their properties being torn down, they have the CDBG properties, which is approved through the, through county, those are coming down, they're tearing down our properties. And we have forty houses and three large buildings that has been standing forever. One is burnt out really, really bad, to the point where it cannot be renovated. And the citizens in that area on McLean and Van Park have been disappointed with that building because there's all kind of smells coming from it, there's all kind of the greed that's always out in front of it. There's a lot going on right there, they see people going in and out, it's a danger. And that building will cost us a little bit over a million dollars to tear down. We don't have those funds, and we're grateful to the county to be able to offer those funds for us to have that building down. The same as twenty five uh Highlands and Glendale, those buildings cost an astronomical amount of money to tear down, that the city do not have, and to be offered the money by the county, the county who are our uh uh Commissioner and her commission is a blessing, just like we was offered that hundred million dollars from the state to get our infrastructure going. These, these, these buildings need to come down, so that new ones can be go up and people can move into this city, if you don't realize, a lot of our population left when all the buildings became vacant. And then once they became vacant and stayed vacant, the one that I know of specifically that's on the list on Glendale, it's been vacant now for almost thirty years, or better, thirty years. No one is coming to rescue us, we have to take advantage of these funds that we get from our county and from our state and from our federal government. So, when they're offered, and we can take care of these things, so that we can get new developments in this city and make sure that there's people coming here. That's what we need to look at. Uh, the only other thing is, I, I'm gonna make a statement that I want everybody to hear. I got a call today from a legislature, from the federal government. They're fed up. They give us this funds, they're fed up with the bickering, the arguing, the going back and forth about things, they see no progress. And so, with that being said, my administration has had has had enough of being mick you, cuss out, call dog kind of names. This, that's not professional, you can disagree, we don't have a problem with that. Disagree with whatever you choose to disagree with, that's your prerogative. But to belittle people, to talk to them like they're infuming, we're not tolerating it. We have had lawsuits filed because people do not know how to control them, their, their tempers, their conversations, and at this moment I'm, I have police officers ready to leave. I have fire department ready, we just got them fooled. They're not gonna stand here and let anyone degrade them. And they're doing a great job on them. Also, as far as the uh planning, planning firm, the state pays for them, the planning firm. The uh building inspection, it pays for itself. We don't pay them. It pay, now, actually, we're gaining money by having them, because we get part of their uh collections. We don't pay them any, but we're getting money. And when you take your personal agendas, because something happened with somebody or someone you don't like, or you didn't like, and you belittle these people, we're not, we will not come anymore. You guys can just do what you need to do. We'll send you the information, write questions down, send it to us. Uh, send it to the attorneys, we'll get the questions answered before the meeting, and you all decide whatever you want to decide. Because this continuous badgering, this continuous uh dogging out people and the hate crimes, because that's what it is, it's a hate crime, it's going to stop. This is your meeting, you can dictate how you want to run it, that's fine with me, but we don't have to be here. And I will not let them be abused anymore. So I'm hoping that we can go from today and working through these things and getting them done so that the federal government is not calling me, telling me they tired of sending money and it's looking like there's nothing happening, or they're tired of what us are sending for grants and things like that. And then when it gets time for it to vote on stuff, it's, it's turned down, or things are turned down, or whatever the case may be, they don't want to send anymore. And that's not good for the city. I want us to come together and do what we need to do for this city, you don't have to like me. That's, that's on you, I don't care, at this point. But what you have to do is the job that you was elected to do, and that is to grow this city. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and first let me apologize to your staff for um having to endure that. Um, I hate to be able to concur to since day one with her efforts to try and improve the morale, it's been very rough for the people in the building to have to endure um some very uncomfortable uh experiences at the hand of City Council, so we're all individuals here. So I want to extend my apology to your staff um for that unnecessary stress.
Council President, with all due respect, please speak directly for yourself, sir.
I'm speaking for myself only.
You say it for council as well, it just came
I do, yes, as a chair, I will say, on behalf of council, yes, I will.
No, no, not on behalf of council.
Sure, I will, yes, I will, yes, it's a fine, that's great, so we're gonna move on to, we have a special guest here today. We also have uh Wayne County Commissioner Martha G. Scott, who was asked to be added to the agenda, we want to make sure we turn the floor over to her. Uh, Ms. Scott, it's always a pleasure to have you here. I know you have something that you wanted to talk to us about, so we want to make sure you have as much time as you need, please, join us here at the podium.
Thank you so much, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, City Council members, Madam Mayor, and to the public. Thank you all for allowing me to be here. I guess I gotta kind of follow some things that, what the mayor was saying. This city has been doing these things since about forty years ago, when I was the mayor. I was grateful to be the first black woman elected mayor of a major city in the state of Michigan. Thank for that, and I was president of the City Council. I have served at the state level six years as a state representative, nine and a half as a senator. And then returned back to the county where I was for a few years and civil service commissioner there. So I'm grateful for all of that, so I do thank God for the opportunity to serve the people. And I say that because I know that's why I'm where I am today. Is because when I was appointed Wayne County Commissioner back in nineteen seventy seven, it was not easy, I was working at Michigan Bell, I was even afraid to tell them that I was coming down to the county for an appointment because Chester Wozniak from Hamtramck had resigned his position, and Commissioner Jackie Curry called me and asked me if I would come for the appointment. I said yes, I was a precinct delegate. And I'm still a precinct delegate today because one of the attorneys that was at the thirteenth congressional district said, we don't have a precinct delegate in your area. So would you please sign on to be a precinct delegate? To all of you, it's a great starting point to be a precinct delegate. And I became a precinct delegate because Shirley Chisholm was running for president of the United States. A friend of mine came by and asked me to be a precinct delegate, I said, I want nothing to do with politics, she said, why? I said, because it's dirty, she said, then you get in there and help clean it up then. She said, if Shirley Chisholm can run for president of the United States, you can certainly be a precinct delegate two or three blocks in your area. Well, I loved me some Shirley Chisholm and Barbara Jordan, those were two strong, dynamic black women that I was so proud of. So I said, yes, I will do that. Working at the telephone company, the black women there came out and did door to door, you would have thought I was running for president. Because back then, we didn't have a lot of us that was in elected positions. And I've lived it all, when I first, my family first moved here to Highland Park, blacks couldn't live all over the city, there were certain areas that you lived in. But it had everything, and my reminder, my father said to me, everything changes because everything must change. So this will change. But he was on the bus one day and heard two men talking about a city called Highland Park that had free college. He said, I gotta find that city, because I have five children that need to be educated. So he did, but we lived either west of Oakland or, no, I guess it was east of Oakland and west of Hamilton. That's where we lived back then. So I was so proud to be able to be able to run for office and to be able to serve. And I know it came from on high, because on that day in nineteen seventy seven, there were thirteen white males than me, and I got that appointment at that day. So I know it came from on high, and that's why I continue to serve and do what I do. I'm grateful. But in order for us to rebuild this city that was so beautiful, couldn't live all over, but we could at least live here and be educated here.
Yes.
And it was one of the most beautiful cities that you'd ever want to see. We were number one, okay? We were rated higher than the gross points that later I had the opportunity as state senator to serve them. So you see things that I'm hearing now are not good. My department heads at the county, I said all of that to tell you just a little bit about where we came from. That what is going on, you have got to talk to your people at the city. Because so much can be done that are not being done because they're not coming together to do it.
Right, right.
It didn't just start with you all. When I was mayor, it happened. Library could be the most beautiful library you want to
It can be, yes.
Now, it would, it would have been.
Okay.
I had a wealthy woman in Gross Pointe that gave me money for my high school and for, for all of mine. I represent three different cities. I live here and I love this city. I represent a large portion of Detroit, that's my largest part area. And Hamtramck, Highland Park is my smallest area. Because we have left Highland Park. And in order to rebuild it, we have got to come together. You don't have to like each other, you don't have to love each other, but you do have to work together.
Right, 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 right.
Or else it means more.
Right.
I sit down at the county, fighting for Highland Park all over town. But Highland Park has got to work together in order to get this city. So I did ask the department, Economic Development, what was going on in my state. This is your matter. But anyway, I'm, I'm not just putting in on you all, but it's been on this whole city, and we said, I was a mayor. But back then, being the first woman certainly was not easy. But I had the best staff that we could have ever had, we did so many programs and stuff. I helped for it to be mayor, so it's real happen, and it's just falling down, 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 down. But it can't be about who you like and who you don't like.
Right.
It's gotta be about this city.
Right.
Each one of you. I don't approve of districts, but you all have districts, considering it's too small. Everybody ought to be accountable for this whole city.
Right.
Yes. Because when I was mayor, we had, I believe it was like thirty-three thousand residents. Down from sixty thousand when we moved to So think about it, pull yourselves together and say, what you have been elected to do was to serve the people, not yourself, titles mean nothing.
Right.
If you don't do anything with it.
Right.
So I'm gonna say from this day forward, like the man said, I just come together and get some things done. And there, there are some projects that the county has right now that needs to, needs to happen. Friend and family, so that I can read. It is the letter. So that are real. Anyway, there are three years. And it's, it's the monies that come in to do the loans and that, what that man and man. The money that comes from the federal. That's fifty-one dollars. You have twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And this year, there's money for twenty-five, which you have not put in for that yet. That's what this letter was about. So if you need some help to get that done, please work with us to get it done.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this is the thing and this, this is that. They do it every year, so.
Well, make sure you do it because they have not put it in this year.
Not yet.
And there's three years that is waiting right now. He said, whatever it is, you have to put it in the request of, of what your staff did in order to get it. That means there's twenty thousand each, each year.
And they use some of, they get open it out.
So you need to put that in writing to the county Economic Development Department to get that done. So they can give you that money and then you put in for twenty-five.
Send it. We'll have it done.
I'll send the message right now. Yes. Please get that done. Because I can't keep asking for money if you're not gonna use what they already have for you. We have to work there. But we have to work collectively together, all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Put all that nonsense aside. All right?
Yes, ma'am.
Please. They say, can you talk to them? As long as I have been out here, I've been in every office there is. But there are in each department, in each office, there are different rules and regulations. You all need some training, all of you, okay? I mean that. And I understand that the state did come down a couple times, but everybody didn't take the training. So request it again and take the training, please. It's important. You can't do what you think ought to be done. There are rules and regulations that we all must follow. Okay. I didn't come to preach, but when the mayor touched on all of that that I have been hearing, it was time for me to talk about it, all right?
Okay.
And like I said, we could have had the library done. So people say to me, well, what about the library? I said, don't talk to me about the library anymore. Omena Omar was the president of the city council and said she had to wait until Mr. Blackwell came. That was when we had this overseer, okay? And he said he was coming for free. I, I told the governor. I said, don't let him come for free. Pay him. Pay everybody that comes to this city. So they ended up getting paid though, because I knew that's what was going to happen. But they didn't accept it because it was coming from Martha G. Scott, okay? But it ain't about me. I'm just that vessel that God allowed to come down here to help, all right? And for somebody who has lived through it all to know what is going on. And the federal government is trying to take us back there now. So if we don't stand up and work together, we will never have this city together. It will never be for our children. And that's what life is all about. It's not about us. It's about those that are coming after us. That's why my father said, oh, I'll save my money and buy a house in Highland Park. So that my children can be educated. There was five of us. I have four brothers and myself, and they've all gone home to glory. But the Lord has left me here to do the work.
Amen.
All right. So I intend to continue doing it as long as he allows me to. I was gonna give it up this time, but Commissioner Clark Coleman said to me, they've given us four years this time. We need to do it. Well, Lord took her home to glory a few weeks ago. But I'm still left here, and I will do my job as long as I'm here, all right?
Yes, ma'am.
And if you all want to put my name on an agenda, please call me and ask me about it first. Respect me because I'm going to respect you, all of you.
Yes, ma'am.
As I said earlier, we don't have to like each other. We don't have to love each other. But we do have to respect each other so we can get the work done for this city. It's not about any one of us, but it's about us moving forward. And I intend to keep moving forward, all right?
Yes, ma'am.
And work with my other fourteen commissioners to make sure that we get what we need for this city and for my total district. I have worked to help everybody in this. When I was in the senate, I had from the very poor to the very richest. But I said to those in Gross Pointe, I will treat everybody the same, no matter if you're rich or poor. Because God gave me this job, all right? Because I had retired after six years in the house. And Virgil Smith, may his, he rest in peace, he went on home to glory a few weeks ago. But because of him, they asked me to come back after three months and run for state senator. So I've been running ever since, okay? And I thank God for the mission to serve because it's about serving people. That's what we're put here on this earth to do. It's not about us. There's a mission for all of us. And we need to ask God what our mission is so we can do it, okay? So please, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't mean to take this long.
No, ma'am. Two doors down. My neighbor, two doors down. We two doors down.
I had not been here, so I'm glad my staff did bring this.
And I'm glad that you had a chance to come to. You're welcome anytime, anytime.
Thank you all. I still do coffee hours.
Yes, ma'am. My sister told me to tell you hello.
Yes, yes. That's one of my show enough the uh, uh, communities over on the east side.
Yes, ma'am.
So may God bless you all.
You as well.
Yes.
Continue to smile on you and ask him to lead you, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. God bless you.
I'm glad that I was able to get on the phone with my neighbor, and she was gracious enough to join us. It's always a pleasure to have an icon in the room. And so we have citizen participation on the agenda. We only have three items. We have the Mayor of Veto, Recreation, and the Senior Citizen. We do not have anything under Community Development. All we have after that is Council Affairs. So if we don't have any discussion on agenda items, we can go right into the actual agenda. Do we have citizens comment on agenda items? I don't see anybody moving. I will move right into item four, which is the Mayor of Veto. Item four, this is a veto of city councils. Vote to terminate the building and planning services of McKenna Associates City Council. Wish your pleasure on item four. I'm sorry, item five? Excuse me. I'm sorry. So this is participation. No one came up to talk about the agenda. You have a question for the agenda? Okay.
Yeah.
Then forgive me, ma'am. I have my head down. But before you get up, I want to have you come up to the podium, but let me do something. I have been asked to do this because we do have two sets of attendees. You come up to the front. I still have Mr. Tucker. I used to have your hand up online. Okay, Mr. Tucker, I'm gonna call you in just a second, ma'am. If you will go ahead. I see Anthony and Anthony Tucker, ma'am. I'm gonna have you go ahead. This is on an agenda item. It's either on the veto, the Recreation Resolution, or the Senior Department.
That's the only thing I can speak about.
At the end of the meeting, we're gonna have an open citizen participation. Okay, so Mr. Tucker, are you, uh, let me ask you to unmute. So is your comment related to an agenda item, sir, or is it a general comment? Anthony Tucker, online. Your hand up still? I'm asking you to unmute. Mr. Tucker, I cannot get you to, if you would unmute yourself.
Okay, yes. Uh, yeah, I, I suppose it's a general question, question.
So this is Anthony. I have just Anthony, not Anthony Tucker?
Yeah, this is Anthony Tucker.
Okay, you don't, you got two phones on, my friend. So that's unusual, but go right ahead. Uh, this is related to the agenda items only.
Okay, I just, I want to talk on the, on the, uh, citizen participation afterward, yeah.
If you stay on the line, I'd be happy to accommodate you.
Okay, thank you.
End of the meeting. Thank you so much, sir. So ma'am, I'm gonna go ahead. You're up now? Yes, please. Thank you so much for being patient with me.
I have, I fell in love with Highland Park fifty-some years ago.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
I got, I got Ms., Ms., uh, Martin. I got confused. This is not about the agenda?
It is.
No, her. Yours?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Martin, go right ahead. Ma'am, forgive me. I'm running a digital meeting, and I'm also running a meeting in person.
Only thing I wanted to address was, um, as a citizen. Um, I'm reading about the veto where it says, uh, number one, the city attorney office was not provided with a written copy of a resolution. So they weren't unable to prove it as, uh, as it to form. My question is, would that mean that the moratorium that I called in the non-rental is because it, what, there was no resolution written? So was it not honored when I called that moratorium? That's just my question. And on that note, I gotta go back.
Okay. Okay, so I can't answer her, her question at this point. And I don't want to proceed without her, so I'm gonna go over some notes here. Next item, since we don't have anybody for citizen participation on the agenda, the next item that we're gonna move on to is item four, which is the actual veto. I'm not gonna move forward with the veto until Ms. Martin returns.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we just call this a five-minute recess? I'm gonna have a five-minute recess, or a three-minute recess.
Chair offer support. All those in favor of a brief recess?
Aye.
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 Ask a quorum. I'm sure Ms. Martin would concur. Go far. Okay, motion to reconvene. Seven fifty-five. Ms. Manica, you wanna call us back?
I move to
reconvene?
Reconvene.
Is seven fifty-five. We hear a roll call of all those in favor to reconvene.
Aye.
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 Meeting reconvened seven fifty-five. We're moving on to item four. That is a veto of city councils vote to terminate the building and planning services of McKenna Associates. City Council, wish your pleasure on item four. Sorry, item five. We taking up this measure or no?
It's nothing to do unless they're trying to
I got some questions.
Cancel out the veto.
I'm waiting for a motion to how we wanna to proceed on item five.
Was a motion made?
No motion was made. I'm waiting.
Okay, well, well, we all know how this is gonna go with regards.
Let's just make a motion. Let's just be formal and make a motion.
To you and Ms. Manica, but I'll make a motion to overturn the mayor's veto.
We have a motion made by Councilman Shapi to overturn. We have support for that?
Support.
And support made for Ms. Martin. Now it's only, I have questions. This is on the floor, so.
Okay.
I'll start with questions. So looking at at the last meeting, when this motion was made, at the time, there was some, I believe, a misconception that somehow the McKenna group's still sending out their leaflets. I own vacant residential property. I received a leaflet for houses that I own, for property that I own. I have not been fined. I have not been ticketed. I have not been ticketed. I own multiple properties in the city, multiple vacant properties. I have not received a fine or a ticket. I still receive mailings from the county, if I pay my taxes on time or not, I still receive mailings from the county, but there is no enforcement action that was taken. So during that council affairs, when the statement that was made that somehow the moratorium had been lifted, the moratorium was on enforcement. The moratorium did not include them sending their information out. They have to every year. Every year, I get a vacant property notice for the property that I own behind my home. Every year. And I get that form and I have to go pay my vacant property fee. If I don't, I'll get a ticket. But if the, if the planning department doesn't send those out, how are people gonna know that they have to renew their form? I have not received, I have personally not received any enforcement on any of the multiple properties that I own. So I didn't understand when people were talking about how the moratorium was affecting the actual citizen. I am personally not aware at all. That doesn't mean it doesn't happen. I am not aware at all of anyone who has had enforcement action taken on them since the moratorium that we ordered back in the spring. And I have a neighbor down the street from me who owns twelve houses in Howland Park today. I have a neighbor down the street from me who owns twelve houses in Howland Park. He has not received any tickets or negative action, and the forms are crude. So I don't understand why we were going to fire them saying that they were violating the moratorium when they have not violated any moratorium that I'm aware of. That's just me personally, and maybe, maybe my situation is unusual, but I am not aware of anybody on my block. My neighbor next door owns multiple houses in Howland Park that his family lives in. Somebody down the street from me owns at least twelve houses. They have not told me by any enforcement action. So these are two people that I know very, I've known them the whole twenty-five years I've lived here. That they, the houses that they own are not on my block. They're in the city. That probably accounts for at least sixteen
So.
properties, and I don't know anybody who has had enforcement action taken on them since the moratorium. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So I've received calls. So this is not about me personally?
No.
It has, it has nothing, well, it has nothing to do with me personally. I've received calls that they say we've been sending outright calls.
Sit, but, but they have to send the notifications, it's a part of their requirement for the state. They have to do, as, as the building department, they are the code enforcement, they are the building department, they are the planning department, and as part of the building department and code enforcement, they have to send out those notices, just like they send out notices to people that have graffiti on their building. They send the notice out. The enforcement action, which we deliberated during one of our workshops, the enforcement action is the next step, is where you get a ticket where you have to go to court. They haven't enforced anything since that moratorium at all, and I, if Mr. Clyburn was here, I don't know if he's online, they haven't enforced anything. So people are getting, are making phone calls, I think those are individual cases where we really need to drill down and make sure those people, if they actually had this happen to them, get, are getting some sort of restitution. Now, if you, you go to do a driveway and you don't pull a permit, you're gonna get a fine. You put a fence up and you don't pull a permit, you're gonna get a fine.
Of course.
So that's, if, that is still part, that has nothing to do with the moratorium on rental property. The only moratorium that we have in place is on rental property. I see your hand, Mr. Shoppe, keep it patient, go ahead.
Okay, so, so real, real, real quickly, uh, Council President.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just wanna touch on a little bit of what you said. Now, it may be a few people that haven't been gotten to yet, but I can assure you, Council President, the reason they haven't gotten to you is because you are the Council President.
I doubt it, no, 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 no.
No, no, hold on a second.
I got a ticket as the City Council President.
All I'm saying is... I have, I have received multiple calls from multiple people in my district. They are threatening them and telling them that they don't get their properties up to section grade level, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to section eight level, that they're gonna be fined and ticketed this much and that much, and these are poor people who don't have this money. On top of that, i- i- it wasn't just the, the fact that the McKenna Group continued to do what we asked them kindly, three times not to do, but I found out the fact of the matter is every one hundred dollars in which they're bringing into the city, they're keeping seventy and giving us thirty. I thought they were supposed to be getting paid from the state. Why are they taking money from us?
So this, this is the part that Mr., so this is, we're, this, we're on the subject of the veto. This is the part that Ms., the Commissioner Scott was talking about. What you just said is not factual.
Combative.
No, it's not factual.
I'm just simply asking a question.
And I'm trying to answer your question, what you just stated is not factual. If you go back to the original contract.
Okay, so what are they taking then, from the money?
So, the city of... Hold on a second, hold on a second. When we had Safe Bill, Safe Bill was a contracted building department.
Right.
Okay, so Safe Bill collected fees.
But that was under...
Hold on a second, hold on a second, you're not allowing it? Safe Bill was paid for their service.
That's not the same, Council President.
The permit, you're Mr. Oshapi, you're talking over me, is not allowing the question to be answered. So, the fees that are collected, you wanna get a garage. It costs you two hundred and fifty dollars for a permit. To execute the permit, they charge a portion of the fee, and a portion of the fee went to the city. That's how, that's how, that's what McKenna is doing. It's a seventy-thirty split. They go and do all the work.
I just said it was seventy-thirty split.
But that is, that is for the collection of the fee. That is only for the collection of the fee. Their planning services, their building department services, their code enforcement services are contracted, it's their salaries, people.
All I'm simply saying is, hold a second, if they're being paid, if the agreement, if the MOU between us was that the state and the county would pay for them, why are they taking money from us?
Mr. Oshapi, the fee.
We should be able to keep all of that money.
The permit is a fee for itself. In order to get a garage, the fee is a hundred dollars.
Under...
However you wanna interpret it, sir, however you wanna interpret it.
Under the McKenna Group, they weren't getting money, uh, uh, I mean, under, under Safe Bill, they were in a contract, they were being paid by us. They weren't being paid by the state and the county, okay? So that comparison doesn't work here, okay?
So that, that's it.
But...
That's your issue, because that's what the documents say.
Irregardless of that, sure, irregardless of that.
Not, not regardless.
Okay. Regardless of all of that,
Thank you.
the bottom line is, the mayor does not have the authority to veto a motion. The Charter clearly states, in the section in which she quoted, the Charter clearly states she only has the authority to veto a, 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 a resolution or an audit. She does not have the authority to veto a motion. If that's the case, Ms. Martin brought up a prime example. If she has the authority to veto anything that we says, then what's the purpose of this council? Why are we here? She could just run the city how she damn well sees fit. Ms. Martin pointed out clearly that we made a motion, verbal motion, to put a moratorium on the rental ordinance. Okay? But that wasn't veto, okay? We made, oh, no, 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 no shirt, please don't interrupt.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We make motions here all the time. Council speaks through its motions, its resolutions, and its ordinances. And you can push that however the hell you and Mr. Boston prefer to do it. Okay, well, we speak through our motions, our resolutions, and our ordinances. That's the only way this council speaks, okay? We've made numerous motions, numerous times, at this council. If we give her that authority, if any council member gives her the authority to veto anything that this council says, you are part in my language of fucking fool.
Okay, thank you, I'm gonna stop you right there, because you're... We're gonna call for the vote, you're misconstruing the facts, you're misconstruing the fact.
Can we...
So go ahead and call for the vote, Madam Deputy Clerk, please go right ahead.
What she quoted here, she does not have the authority to...
The veto made by Councilman Oshapi, supported by Councilwoman Martin. Would you go ahead and call the roll on that, please?
Councilwoman Oshapi?
No.
Keep going.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Repeat the motion?
The motion was made to overturn the veto made by Councilman Oshapi, supported by Councilwoman Martin. We already have two nodes to overturn, go right ahead, please.
No to overturn.
Yep.
Council Proton Robinson?
No, 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 no. My vote was to overturn.
You said no.
No, I said no to what he was talking about. My vote is a yes to overturn.
Okay, my, my vote's a yes to overturn.
Yes to overturn.
Some clarification from the clerk on what the actual motion is?
Motion is, yes.
The motion was to overturn the veto.
Yes to overturn.
Yes.
No.
And why am I not surprised, Ms. Manica? Not surprised at that. I'm not surprised at that at all.
Council Proton Robinson?
The mayor does not have this authority.
They, they know she don't have this authority. But they're gonna get it doing nothing.
Council Proton Robinson?
The mayor does not have the authority.
Okay. So is it yes or is it no?
Uh, no to overturn. Motion does not carry, you need a super majority. Moving on to Item Six, under Recreation, that's a resolution to issue an RFP to Wayne County Intergovernmental Agency, IGA Grant Project. So for Item Six A, City Council, what's your pleasure?
I'm making a motion to remove, we, because it was already passed and we voted one day.
So, no, ma'am, ma'am, we, we approve the agenda. So right now, we have a, the resolution, uh, Six A, resolution to issue a RFP for the Wayne County Intergovernmental Agency. We can't just go willy-nilly like that, it's Item Six A. This is what Commissioner Scott was referring to. So for Item Six A, City Council, what's your pleasure? This is a resolution to issue a RFP for the Wayne County Intergovernmental Agency Grant Project?
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Manica. Chair will offer support. Questions, concerns?
This council is irrelevant, you just gave the authority to the mayor to do what the fuck he wants. Have a good day.
All right, so for, uh, we have a motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by the chair, to approve the resolution to issue a RFP for Wayne County Intergovernmental Agency IGA Grant Project. Questions, concerns, dissent? Would you please call the roll on Item Six A, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, moving on to Item Six B, resolution to issue two RFPs for the Council of Michigan Foundation, CMF, Department of Natural Resources Spark Grant. City Council, what's your pleasure on Item Six B? This is the continuation. Mrs. Norlander here is for us to get this, to get this approved. This is a resolution to issue the two RFPs. She came back to us for, I'm understanding, this is, she, she was here, she did the workshop, and all she needs us to do is approve this resolution so she can issue these RFPs. City Council, what's your pleasure on Item Six B? Uh, I mean, I'm ready to entertain a motion on Six B. I'm ready to, uh, to entertain a resolution for, I mean, a motion for Item Six B.
I moved to approve
Thank you very much.
the resolution to issue two RFPs for the CMF DNR Spark Grant.
Chair offers support. Do we have questions, concern, or dissent? Madam Proton, you said you had something that you wanted to, uh...
Ms. Norlander is here. If you have any questions.
It, it's not the same resolution. She's issuing two RFPs. She's asking for RFPs. Okay, so... It's not, I, no, I didn't put anything. There's Ms. Norlander there. Okay, go ahead, let's call for the vote on Item Six B, would you please? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson? Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, moving on to Item Seven. Under the Senior Department, this is a resolution to authorize the Howland Park Senior Department to request and accept training funds from the Southeast Michigan Senior Regional Collaborative to strengthen capacity of powerful tools for caregivers. Is that this last one that you provided us here? Okay, okay. City Council, what's your pleasure on Item Seven, or under Senior Citizens? We have a motion, we have a motion to approve from Council Proton, second by Councilwoman Manica. Questions, concerns, dissent? We can go ahead and call the roll. Madam, Madam Deputy Clerk, please?
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you, motion carries. So now, this is the portion of citizens' participation. Let me get to the people online first. Our attendees, we have Carla O. as the first person. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Give me a second to get my timer together. Okay, Carla, I'm gonna give you two minutes and thirty seconds. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Go ahead and speak up, I wanna be, make sure we can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Uh, anybody had a remote control, can we turn this up so Ms. Oliver can be heard?
There's a remote.
There.
Oh, I don't have it, I don't see it.
Can you hear me now?
Hold on just a second, Ms. Oliver, let me make sure I get the volume up. I can hear you fine, I wanna make sure that the gallery can hear you. Go right ahead.
Okay, um, so this, I wanted to listen to, to the meeting in regard to the veto um, and the, and the approval, and disapproval of the veto. Um, but, but this is where I was confused as far as the legal representation of it. Because technically, um, her and the council, um, the, they doesn't have the authority to veto the motion. Um, and this is where I think Martha, Commissioner, uh, had some in, in that as far as everything that she was talking about. I think everybody needs some trust and an understanding of what the documentation actually says. Now, whether or not there could be legal ramifications for having a verbal petition, is one thing, but the fact that we just got two um, disapprovals to overturn the veto does not align with what you are saying. So, like I said again, we continue to, as a city, continue to do things that are not in order and also in the best interest um, of what was already stated within the charter. Um, and just when, you know, these, these meetings are recorded, and they're meeting minutes. So, you know, it's just something to really think about. Um, like I said, it's a, it's a verbal motion, that is a, a beef within itself. And that also seems to be happening uh, in a public space, but also some things that, uh, the mayor doesn't actually have the authority to use. Um, uh, is a whole other difference. And again, it seems like no one should be listening to what, to what the commissioner just stood up and basically just said about training and understanding and giving each other the respect, and I agree. Nobody should be forming out of anything. But that's just, um, my point of view, my opinion, that whole agenda item received until I saw the voting. Um, but that's, that's all I have.
All right, ma'am, that's your time. Thank you so much. All right, we have people in the audience. Come right up, ma'am, go right ahead. State your name for the record, please, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Shamika Nichols. I am the Executive Director of Solidarity, um, as well as a resident of Howland Park. Um, with the removal, um, of the firm, what does that mean for programs like our Whole Homes, Whole Communities program? Where we're using eight million dollars to do home repairs for free for residents. Um, our program hasn't rolled out officially yet, but we have an inquiry list that we've been building. Um, so just wondering how that will impact that program? Yes, um, what, what the firm that was just fired? How would that impact?
Negatively, very negatively, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, what, I guess what I'm saying is without that firm. Yeah. Okay. Um, and then I also wanna make mention of the ordinance, uh, that was for the, um, Sustainability Task Force that has still not been addressed by council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Good evening, please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, my name is Melinda Jones. Howland Park resident, of course. Um, I would just like to say, my daughter is nine years old, and she's very interested in the politics of the city. I explained to her every meeting, after the meeting, what has occurred, what you all voted on, what that means for our city. For example, a few weeks ago, the zoning thing that, that was voted on, she didn't understand what was happening. And I explained to her that now that property doesn't have a zone, and now she gets what that means. So for any city council member to sit in this meeting and curse the way that he did is disrespectful to every citizen in this community, especially the children, because what example are we setting for them for the future? What example are we setting for them for the upcoming leadership? Because we all are gonna have to leave at some point. Every one of you are not gonna be in a seat for the rest of your lives.
No, ma'am.
At some point, this nine-year-old is gonna be a thirty-year-old who might be on the city, sitting on the city council. And what example does she has to follow? We watched these videos, she would look back at these meetings, these webinars, and realize how ridiculous this city looks because of its leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Now, ma'am, you've been so patient.
I'm almost, I'm almost ready not to eat the time at all for you. I just wanna let you go, but if you would, please state your name for the record.
My name is Amanda Oliver. I've been in Highland Park for fifty-some years. My first child was born in Highland Park. I love Highland Park. Well, I don't have fourteen properties and don't have five. But you know what? I love my neighbors, but I don't think my neighbors love me. They talk about everything that they have in Highland Park, but do you be concerned about the people that don't have nothing? Or are you just throwing your trash in your, personally, your yard? They can't do it. I have cut grass in Highland Park. I have went around and tried to keep the sidewalks clean. I'm seventy-one years old and I can still keep it moving. Well, you know what? I'm tired of us sitting around talking about what we have, but you throw your dirt in somebody else's yard. Yeah, but that's all right, because you know what? I know it's a stronger power. So whatever you do, the Lord sees what you do, okay? Now, here it is. I have pleaded from the, the mayor all the way down. I was cheated our property because they gave the property for one dollar to somebody else. Well, that same property stands empty. I had to go around and collect grass. Rats running around my property. I can't, I asked somebody about the sidewalk and they told me it was the county problem to keep the sidewalk clean. I wonder how do you feel if you're walking down the sidewalk and you got crossed over? Or maybe just go ahead and let them fleas get on you? I wonder how do you feel? But it's all right. It's all right, because you know what? I prayed five, six, seven times today to let Highland Park come back the way I remember it. And you know what? They own twenty, I know Jews that had owned twenty lots in Highland Park, but you know, it didn't look like a dump the way it look now. But that's all right. God will forgive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Citizens of Highland Park, I am Robert Lodge. I want to, um, talk about the item that was taken off the agenda. Item number six, Community Development. Uh, this is one of the two establishments that I informed council about several weeks ago. The majority of citizens in Highland Park have made it clear. We do not want this type of business in our city. The Planning Commission has voted and recommended not to have this establishment in our, in our city. And I'm asking the elected council members to stand with the citizens. Therefore, we are expecting this esteemed council, when it comes back on the table, to vote no. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else coming, so we're gonna move right into council affairs with you, Ms. Martin.
Anybody online?
Uh, no more.
Nobody's online?
Nope. Let's roll.
All right. Looks like we're gonna get out of here before nine. That is nice. All right. So I wanted to sit there and say thank you for everybody coming out, being here. That was awesome to share. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, the young lady with the nine-year-old. That is, say it again? Melinda. That was awesome about your daughter, that she's interested in politics and interested at such a young age. That's our future. I am so happy to hear about that. My apologies. I know I'm not the one that said it, but I can give a humble apology about what she heard. Unfortunately, I'm only one-fifth of this body, so let me go ahead and say that. Also, the sustainability, we do have a meeting, and I got some questions to, to ask to find out what's going on so we can dive and sink some teeth into that. Um, I also wanted to address, I thought that we had, um, I guess motions, I don't know if we say motions better or they don't. I'm, I'm kinda a little confused. It's a little shaky on that, but I thought we made a motion about communication and transparency of having, um, our, our agendas and what's in our packet to be before the citizens. I'm still wondering where, where do we stand on that? Um, I also wanna address, um, Ms. Holmes. I did see that two-five-two, uh, Taylor on the demolition sheet. I just wanna go ahead and put that on the record. Also, I was received an email about one-thirty-eight Brighton. I'm, I am going to, she's not here. I'm gonna have to talk to the mayor to find out what is going on with that particular property. Um, on that note, I'm gonna go ahead and dial back and say thank you for being out here tonight, you guys. I'm, I appreciate when you guys show up, considering how, um, our city council goes. I'm, I appreciate that so much. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Manica.
All right, good evening, everyone. I just have some reminders. The mayor mentioned one, and that is, um, the night out. Officers Night Out, that is tomorrow, five to eight, right next door. Coco is our host. Uh, we'll have DJs, music giveaways. Also, there will be, I'm gonna say it's a band called We Done. Will also be there as well. I also wanna say thank you to the Police Department and St. Luke African Methodist United, I'm sorry, Methodist Episcopal Church. Congratulations on your clothing drive. I went by. It was really successful. They had a lot of clothes and things donated, so uh, congratulations to the unity between the Police Department and one of the churches here in Highland Park. Also, please look on the Highland Park website. Um, there are some dates from August fourth to August eighth for the Gleaners uh, Community Food Bank, August fourth to August eighth for the Gleaners Community Food Bank. Also, Wayne Metro is offering, uh, the faucet and water safety uh, program. That's replacing faucets. They also will, uh, help you fill out a lead service application, and that does require a home visit, uh, appointment from, uh, their auditing team. Also, the school district of Highland Park, Barbara, is scheduled to have their open house. Oh, I guess it's called a Centennial Celebration, uh, and Jazzy Jazz. That's coming up from two to six. And I don't know why, can you give me the date for that?
August twenty-second, back to school.
Yeah, August twenty-second. Thank you, August twenty-second. So again, it's two to six. Also, I look forward to anyone, um, seeing you tomorrow at Cakes and Shakes on Woodward for Mix It Up with Manica from five to six, from five-thirty to six-thirty. Uh, that's, that's all for me this evening. Thank you.
Madam Proton?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. Did you say Melinda or Belinda? Belinda, Melinda. Um, I wanted to apologize to his daughter here and that friend. Also, and, um, our pastor is here and, and thank him for being here. And my sister Joyce. Attorney Bosley. I know you got a lot of stuff that you said before you gave it to us and you have, have received that. But I need to be writing where and who and what law gave the mayor the authority to, you know, a motion. No, and, and, and you said it because of the action. It's an action or, action or discussion. And we told it was a matter, because it shouldn't have been a discussion. It said action or, well, you just took the point yourself to call it an action. Where it clearly states action or discussion. He's gonna say definitely. With that, I'm done.
Okay, thank you so much. So, um, to veto or not to veto? This is kind of a silly question, and I'm going to share my screen. I want to make it clear, especially after having a conversation with Commissioner Scott prior to the meeting. There is a disconnect between what is actual and what people make assumptions in their mind is actually going on. So I want to make sure that you see at home, on the screen, the type of communications that I get from members of city council. This is, I'm worried about y'all. I'm not worried about them. I'm worried about people on city council. Okay? On the screen, you see an email. This is the email that I received from Councilman Ashafi related to firing of the McKenna Group. It says, "First, allow me to say, for the record, you published a veto of our, ARE, firing of the McKenna Group, which happened on July twenty-first at our regular scheduled meeting for the Highland Park. For the record, excuse me, I did not interrupt you. The citizens do not have a chance to see our email. This is public record." This email goes on to explain, "Excuse me, ma'am, for the record, you only sent this to council president and in, into the attorneys. You did not send it to the rest of council members, therefore making it invalid. You do not reserve the right to veto motions that council makes. You only reserve, excuse me, ma'am, you only reserve the right, the charter of the city Highland Park, to veto resolutions the council makes, not their emotions. Therefore, the firing of the mechanical group stands whether you like it or not. Three, the mechanical group is supposed to be paid from the state and the county, yet I come to find out that therefore every one hundred that they are bringing into the city, they take seventy and they give us seventy, which they are not supposed to do, was one of the reasons for their termination. They are stealing from the city of Highland Park." Ma'am, would you be so kind? My point is that this is the type of communication that we receive, so if you're wondering why there is such a disconnect, it's because there are documents that are provided to us by the city, by the various department heads, and these are the responses that we get. How is it a good idea because of someone's emotional response to getting a, a ticket for operating without a permit to fire the planning service for the city that it took us two and a half years to secure? We had to go up to Lansing and ask the governor to pay for this service. They provide three things in one. And the permits that they draw to execute the permit and to get it issued, they take a portion of the fee. The remainder of the fee, which was not coming to the city, now goes into the city's coffers. This whole idea of making this motion was asinine. It made absolutely no sense. How does it make sense for a city that just received through, by your leads, the largest of the state? They provided us with planning, with building, with code enforcement, through a grant, which we don't have to pay any money for, and we didn't have any of these services. And now we spent a workshop, we spent over an hour planning to work on ordinances where we're gonna require their help, and at the end of that meeting, somebody makes a motion to fire the people that we just said we were gonna use for the next three months. That was ridiculous. That was absolutely insane. That is what we deal with here on a regular basis. There are things that are written, the, the law, that, that Commissioner Scott says we need more training. Mr. Ashafi said, I, I can't speak for anybody. Don't speak for him. I'm telling you, as somebody who's been using Robert's rules since I was in college, we needed parliamentary support. They voted no. So we're in a situation of chaos. I'm telling you based on my day job that the things that happen here will get, will get half the city council fired. It doesn't make any sense. It's what's written on the page. This is like a circus. There is no disconnect. In the last month, I've been in department-level meetings with executives for the county, for educational institutions, for professionals in business, and they say to me, "Don't bring your council members. We're not wanted. We're not welcome." It ain't all of us. It's some of us. Every newscaster in the state of Southeastern Michigan has called me about the fiascos of our meetings. So it's, it's not people not working together. It's people not reading and writing and understanding. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. I digress. Let me go to, people have been asking about, people have been asking about sharing the meetings, and we have been telling you, it is not an easy process. This is for the city of Ann Arbor. Agenda packets and minutes. If you go to the city, they'll show you, this is their website. Their media income is twice ours. This is their website. These meetings go back to the first of the year. If you click on any of these meetings, all of these things are supported. Somebody's day job is to upload this information. This is twenty to thirty-five hours a week. The details of the packet, the video, the agenda, the media, the minutes, the private information that has to be redacted. They don't, we don't have the staff and/or the people, and there are people that are screaming at us as if we're not providing it. I'm showing you online, meeting details. I'm just gonna click on something random from January. All of these items are supported. Every line item you see is supported by data. The website has to maintain this forever. This is somebody's day job. A full-time FTE does this. We got twenty people in this building. So when people talk about how we're deficient, we don't have the staff, we don't have the money. The media income in Ann Arbor is eighty thousand dollars. The media income here is about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars. Twice the, twice the income, okay? Forty times the people, and they have to have a full-time FTE to do this. So please stop coming here saying that we're doing something deficient. Stop sending those emails with the, whatever this guy's name is, telling us what we should be able to do. All of these people talking and no one is doing anything. All of the critics aren't doing any of the work. I cut the grass in front of my house. It's city property. I cut the grass. I cut fifty parcels of land every month in this city, and all of it ain't mine. Okay? I cut mine. Everybody else cutting theirs. Where is the resource? We couldn't even get a, a turn-in-place lawn mower. So the people who are saying they're tired of our city council, be specific. Be specific, because all of us are not your headache. All of us are not embarrassing you. I'm in a room with a president of an organization, and they say to me, "The only reason you're here is 'cause you're not them." And because they want to do something for Highland Park, but they refuse to come anywhere near this city council. I gotta leave this place to go meet on behalf of the city, and I do it every month, and we don't get paid to do it. I'm at meetings to do something to benefit this community every week, and we don't get paid to do it. They make more money than me at Popeyes to do the job. So, that's that. So there's your online package. If you got, like Mr. Lackey said, a full-time employee, forty-five, fifty thousand dollars for another admin whose only job is to support our package, sounds like a good plan to me. I only have sixteen months remaining, so the question is, come together to do what? I, I'm together when I get here. I'm, I'm together when I get here. I've been told that myself, Ken Cockle Jr., Dennis Archer, and John Conyers got our degrees out of a church basement. I graduated from Wayne State University, but I was told I got my degree out of a church basement. Okay, by a member of the city council. So I mean, I'm gonna keep showing up, doing what I'm asked to do. The veto, the actual motion was asinine. Not having a written resolution was stupid, and making that motion was irresponsible. Again, you're sawing the branch that you're standing on because you're mad at the tree. I'm just saying, you can't make this up. You can't make this up. Having concluded all business related to the city of Highland Park, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, eight-thirty-four. Thank you.